We ready?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members except Sherri are present. She had another commitment tonight. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We lock hands next time?
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Uh, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the consent agenda.
Second. Any comments, Don?
A couple of items. Actually, no items on this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Policy.
We haven't met yet this school year.
Southwest Metro?
Uh, Southwest Metro had their meeting last Tuesday, and they're off to a good school year start. Uh, we had a nice presentation about one of the programs that was over there that dealt with students that had difficulties in terms of, uh, of, uh, how should I say it? Meeting their goals in school, and it was a very good meeting. Uh, and other than that, things are going well there.
Okay.
And CPAC is the next one, and they are currently meeting at this time.
You missed it. You missed it.
Community Ed?
At this time for Community Ed, uh, there's a hundred and twenty-one, uh, adult courses and one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight youth courses. The last meeting was, uh, the last meeting was last Thursday, and main topic was, uh, getting the, uh, setup for the, uh, for the open house. Kids Company goes from Eagleview one seventy-six, Falcon Ridge one twenty-two, and Raven Stream at one eighty-one, and they have seven on a waiting list. This, or not this, on September twenty-seventh, uh, at the Park Ballroom, there is a seminar and a bunch of vendors on aging well, senior and pre-seen, uh, pre, uh, senior people are invited.
Put on by Community Ed? Is it sponsored by Community Ed?
It is sponsored by Community Ed, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Ken, there's one other thing that I want to mention. The Southwest Metro did a nice job of summarizing programs and other important facts that deal with the intermediate district, and so I'll pass that around. Everybody can have a copy of that.
Thank you. Wellness Committee? Did not meet yet. Early Childhood, have you had your quarterly? All right, Superintendent reports.
Okay, some things, uh, coming up in the month of October. Make sure everyone knows about, um, at our work session in October, we'll be discussing the possibility of leaving Ties. And I gave you some information of that, and that's the organization we belong to for information and a lot of information technology services. And it's a organization that we joined seven years ago that we really don't use hardly any services with them right now. And, um, we're, we're working with other districts figuring out a way to leave without a great penalty to our district with that. But I'll be giving more information on that, like I said, in October. Other thing, um, and I'm gonna give a presentation tonight on the operating levy, so we'll do that on TV, but we got about, I think about twenty-five meetings scheduled. I've spoke at, uh, to two groups so far, so, uh, groups within the district, within the community. We'll have three open meetings, one here, one Eagleview Elementary, and one at... Lonzdale Public Library. So in all three communities, along with, uh, meeting with some other groups. So we got that going on. Also at the October session, work session, we'll talk about ACT participation. Uh, there's no requirement for all juniors to take it. Uh, by law now, we only pay for students who are on free introduced lunch, but, um, I'm gonna just share some data with you so we can make an informed decision what the costs are, that type of thing, and I have a recommendation for you at that time. And the other thing to share with you, uh, just, enrollment's pretty settled down right now, but just on post-secondary enrollment, uh, we've got eighteen full-time students that are taking PSEO at, uh, local colleges, mainly Normandale. Twenty-six of the thirty-seven go there. When I say thirty-seven, eighteen full-time, and there's nineteen part-time. Uh, with of that nineteen, only seven are taking just one PSEO class. And just so you know, that number has gradually been going down the last three years. It's probably about half of what it was two years ago. And I think, uh, the big reason why is, uh, the classes that we're often offering here at New Prague High School, the changes that have been made by Lonnie and Tom about offering more CIS classes, AP classes, our male class, our off-site class, you know, our integrated learning class, those type, or I should say Mars program classes. Uh, we're finding our kids wanna stay here and have those opportunities for learning. So a very positive thing in that regard. And not to say PSEO is a bad thing. I think it's a fit for some kids, but I think if we can offer quality learning experiences here and they don't have to drive thirty, thirty-five miles to go somewhere else and have, uh, you know, a strong rigorous program, I think that's a positive. So, that's all I got.
I got a question regarding the Ties. How, is this gonna be a kind of an ongoing situation for a while, or you have no idea?
Um, talk, I had a meeting today with ten other superintendents, and, uh, the one leading it thought, uh, it would not be one that would drag out very long. That we'll have a decision made on this. Because, uh, the meeting that we were at a few weeks ago, I think it was September eighth, they were trying to hold out hope, I think the executive committee, but, uh, the people in the room probably were not as positive or optimistic after hearing everything. And, uh, I just think there's a lot of people that are in the same position we are. Uh, probably, some of them have been in it since the very beginning, founded, you know, founded Ties with them. Uh, many of them are looking to get out right now. We've only been with Ties since two thousand and ten. And we went in there for Cognos, that data warehouse, um, system, and we don't use that, we haven't used that for two years now. So, and we have no, and so it's, I just get the feeling that's the direction it's going. I, I, we'll see what happens. I'll keep you informed. We'll talk about the October session. We'll have, I will have a meeting coming up with Ties here shortly with, uh, quite a few school districts that want to, uh, talk to the director and let them know where they're standing too. So, I think strength is in numbers.
Okay.
Was there, was there, um, any kind of a commitment when we signed up in the first place as to how many years you had to stay with them?
No, they had bylaws, but, um...
You can't really get out once you join.
Yeah, once you get in.
The bylaws where we're...
Yes. They, yeah, I'm gonna give you some shocking numbers here, but when, this is six months ago when Sandy and I met with the director and we're just like, we're not, you know, what we're paying in was approximately twenty-five thousand a year, whatever. We're not getting, we're, it's not worth, we're not in anything. Why are we doing this? And, um, we asked to get out, and then they came back and said it would cost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to get out. And then, um, of course, we met with them again and gave our rationale why it shouldn't be that much, which was totally ridiculous. And then they came back with, it'll cost a hundred and forty thousand to get out. So that's where it's at right now. There's two ways to go about doing this. Um, one is to get other districts, uh, to go with us, and basically through the majority of school districts in, that are in Ties, basically saying they wanna get out, the whole organization could be dissolved on a vote. Or the other thing is, we'd, uh, by state statute, we could go to the, uh, Commissioner, Education Commissioner, who will probably defer it to an administrative law judge who'd make a decision, school district by school district. So, we have that state statute, or we could go the other way. Uh, we'll see what happens. We're not going to pay the fee, and, um, yeah, we'll have to see what happens. And like I said, I'll have more information for you at the October work session. It's a good question.
Any other questions?
Uh, our first action item for tonight is to approve the extended trip to Paris in Italy. Greg Tokowski presented this at our work session meeting. Just to kind of have the option for kids to take the, a trip overseas for history that he would lead.
Chairman, I, uh, motion that we accept the trip to Paris in Italy and approve it.
I'll second.
And this is for the summer of two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
Just so they could gauge interest and start saving for the trip, starting now?
Yeah, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Tokowski for coming forward early with this, and, uh, if you know him, it would be very well planned.
And most of these trips have been very beneficial, from what I can tell, in the past anyway, so I don't have any problem with it.
I wanted to go after he explained it to our work session. Anyways, any other comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Pass.
We're done.
We just passed, do you wanna say something?
All right, thank you. What question, sir? If you're here, you can't get out. Okay, that's what I meant. Well, thank you.
Yeah, no, we just passed a six oh vote, um, to approve it, and just appreciate your advanced planning and attention to detail, and it sounds like a great trip.
The news out to the kids.
Kitten's already volunteered to be a chaperone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, activity account contract approval.
Do we need an explanation on it?
Yeah, Sandy's gonna do it.
Yeah, per the, um, activity account and the school board statutes, basically only a school board can enter into a contract even for activity accounts. So, this is one you approved last year for just the DJ services for homecoming, prom, and...
Snowball?
Snowball, yes. So just ask that you approve that tonight for the year.
There were three of them, was prom too?
Yeah, it's homecoming, snowball, and prom.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, will you approve the activity accounts?
I'll second.
Can I ask, uh, are the expenses very much different from last year?
No, very similar.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Uh, next we have to approve a New Prague Area Education Foundation grant. This one is to Raven Stream for a growing station, um, to grow plants in the, at the school, uh, for seventeen hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, New Prague Education Foundation grant to Raven Stream.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Preliminary levy.
Yes, thank you. So tonight I'll be asking you to approve the preliminary levy at maximum level, which is what we do every year, because the numbers this time of year are still very fluid, and this year is no different. So I'll go through the major, um, changes from the prior year and just make some comments on it. First of all, this does not include the expiring operating levy, which obviously expired with the levy in two thousand and seventeen. So if the vote passes, if the voters approve the operating levy in November, that will be added on to this.
And is that the whole eight hundred amount that's not included in this, or just the voter?
No, just the, just the one forty-six seventy. Yeah, so then it would be two forty-six seventy that would be added. It does, uh, if you recall, last year we had that issue with the changeover in the pupil units. It does include another prior year adjustment due to the finalizing of the changes in pupil units. That's the hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Um, MDE had to really, um, search to find out why that happened. They don't really have a good explanation, but it is money that we have coming to us, and it is as a result of that change in pupil units. The board approved local optional, excuse me, the board approved local optional levy, equity and transition. Because our market values are increasing, that means the equalization aid is decreasing again this year. That's gonna be happening every year that our market values increase. So in addition to the changes in pupil units, which always, you know, makes our levy increase, um, the decrease in equalization aid increases our local op, our local levy. This is the last year of the economic development abatement levy, so that's a, that's good news. So, um, this is the last year you'll be seeing that, and then that will be closed out. Um, the building lease line, basically the bus garage is now paid for, so we don't have to levy for that anymore, but we do have the lease levy for the baseball fields now that we're adding. The, uh, the large increase in the general fund is the final year of implementing the long-term facilities maintenance. And actually, part of this is in debt service for the high school roof. If you recall, when you approved the budget, um, the LTFM, we are gonna be putting a new roof on the high school next year, and that piece of the levy is actually in the debt service fund. Uh, but basically, uh, this is the final year of implementing that, that long-term facility maintenance levy. We're going from two hundred and ninety-two dollars per pupil unit to three hundred and eighty. That's why there's such a large increase. We also have a new levy for the Southwest Metro Intermediate District. Um, that's about twenty thousand dollars, though the board approved that we would lease levy for, or we would levy for that. So it's possible we do our final levy in December. Um, we, we may not need all of this LTFM money, in which case we would under levy, but we'll decide that in December when we, uh, when we come to that. In Community Ed, basically, the big change there is our, our school age childcare costs have increased substantially over the last couple of years. Um, that's the levy that we have for, basically, students, um, with disabilities and servicing those kids in our Kids Company program. And those costs have really, really increased a lot. And this dollar amount, that hundred and ninety thousand dollars includes both a prior year adjustment plus just an increase. We need to increase the amount of money that we're, we're getting for our school age childcare levy.
How do they set that? Based on previous year's costs?
Yep, yep, and it really exploded, um, about a year ago, and that's why the prior year adjustment, and then we need to kind of do some catch-up here. And then debt service, you'll see a very large, um, reduction for debt excess. I'm working with MDE. We just finished our audit last week, and, um, our fund balance, our Fund Seven fund balance is going down. That was for, uh, some capitalized interest that we had. So I'm working with MDE to take that out, but right now it's still showing, so I wanted to actually show what MDE is showing. So I believe that that debt excess is gonna go back to around that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars mark. Um, but I'm still working with MDE on that. We have until December to do that, and I'm still working with them on that. So that kind of summarizes the major changes here from the prior year. And, um, we'll be asking, I'll be asking again that you certify the levy at maximum. That allows for all the changes that yet need to be made and the adjustments that need to be made, and then you'll do the final levy approval in December with our truth and taxation meeting. Any questions at all?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary levy at maximum.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
You're gonna do the whole presentation?
Yep, we're gonna do the presentation, and, um, it's gonna be the highlight of the night.
Did you make a video?
Yeah, video, no, not yet. That's coming. Um, but I'm gonna go through the presentation so people can see it, uh, obviously on TV, or check our website, and, and, like I said, I've given two presentations. So going over this, and, and like I tell people, I want people to understand what an operating levy is when I finish this, and why there is the need to renew and increase by a hundred. And what it is, it's basically revenue for essential services. It's our day-to-day operations, things that provide student support and programming. So whether it's classroom staffing, supplies, utilities, uh, or heat, or air conditioning, uh, transportation, all our programming with activities and athletics, uh, that's money, uh, that comes from the operating levy. And I make a big distinction between this and obviously our construction, uh, our bond referendum that we passed a couple of years ago in two thousand and fifteen, May of two thousand and fifteen, to build our additions and renovations. It's two separate levies. And what our current reality is with our school funding sources is to run our school day-to-day operations, eighty-five percent, most of it comes from the state. Local property taxes for us is ten point three percent, and that's the part I'm talking about tonight. Uh, we get even much less from federal sources, and then one point eight percent from other. But the federal sources, and one of the reasons we don't get money is simply because of our demographics. With, there is not, uh, we just didn't, we don't get that much compared to some other local districts. But ten percent is from local property taxes I'm gonna talk about today. Now, our fund balance history, and we've got a few people on the board that were back here in two thousand and two, two thousand and six, seven, and we were under one percent fund balance. And it was not a good time in that time, but in two thousand and seven was when we passed a referendum, and I'll get, talk about a timeline then, an operating levy referendum, uh, which helped us grow that fund balance. And obviously, enrollment has helped us also, and also, I think, being good stewards of money, that it's steadily increased, and as you see on the graph there in the fund balance history, our projections for this year is to go down just under a million dollars, and projected, uh, actually for this past year, we'll find out in the audit, and then for this year, uh, to go down, uh, at least two million more.
Uh, Tim?
Yep.
What is the state recommended, uh, amount that we have for, um, uh...
Fund balance? Fund balance, it's usually, most, uh, audits will, auditors will, uh, say between eight and twelve percent. I would say the majority, would you not, Sandy? Eight to twelve percent. And, uh, right now, as a, as a school district, as a school board, uh, we've set a minimum of eight percent right now. You know, currently right now, we'll probably finish sixteen, seventeen with the auditor. We're guessing between twenty and twenty-two percent. If you look at that five point five nine million, uh, it will be closer to fourteen percent of our fund balance. So we have a pattern of going down, uh, right now, and obviously, we're gonna have to tighten our belt with that, and then obviously, too, the importance of passing operating levy is even more important. Uh, comparisons, you know, as far as local operating levies, so people can see, um, our ten comparable school districts, we're about right in the middle. We get eight hundred and seventy-one dollars per student. Most school districts will do, or not most, uh, some of the school districts will, I don't wanna say this is a minimum, but common is seven twenty-four, would be on the low end. You can see on the graph here, Chisago Lakes, uh, close to nine fifty, Monticello, twelve hundred. Big Lake, when it has that black there, they also have a technology levy referendum to pay for, obviously, technology expenses. So if you add those together, they're almost at fourteen hundred. And our neighbor, uh, to the east, Northfield, um, together with the technology referendum are getting about two thousand. So if you ever, having the ability to do this, now, if you ever hear about the disparity or read about the disparity between school districts, what that means is, obviously, a lot of our comparable school districts are similar to us. We don't have a huge commercial or business base to take the burden off the residential. And so I'll give you an example. I don't wanna comment on Northfield right now, I'm not sure, but, uh, I know they have more commercial than us, but I don't know how much more, but, for example, Richfield, for example, they've got Best Buy and Southdale Mall right in their backyard. And so that takes a lot of pressure off their tax, uh, property taxes for their residents. So when we, uh, for example, are at eight seventy-one, the tax impact for us, uh, I'm not sure what Richfield at, but if it's two thousand dollars per student, they have probably similar to a tax impact on their residents that we do, but they're getting that much more, right? And I will say this, Northfield too, is they're going after, I think, a hundred and twelve million dollar bond referendum in November, depending on the passage, but they wanna increase their lot, local operating revenue, uh, levy by over four hundred dollars. So they wanna go four hundred dollars for their local operating levy. If that passes, the second question is a bond referendum. So they're really going for it. Uh, they have needs for building, but, uh, they also have needs for local operating levy too. But, um, the, the money that they're getting pursuant is quite a bit more than us. Well, it's basically over double. Go ahead. Uh, some other districts, Prior Lake, it's almost eleven hundred per student, and Lakeville, again, they have a technology levy, uh, so they're at about a little over seventeen hundred dollars per student, so they're almost double than us. Now, keep in mind, you might say, well, how do we pay for our, our technology? It's simply out of the general fund, our, our operating levy, or our general fund. So we don't have anything, uh, separate, dedicated just to technology like some school districts. Statewide average, so people are aware, is just under thirteen hundred dollars per student, so that is the state average, we're well below that. Now, historical timeline, okay, like I said, two thousand and seven, a very important passage of a local operating levy, and it was for five years at seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars per student. In two thousand and eleven, um, as a district, we went out a year early, and just in case it didn't pass, we had a year to go for it, and, uh, the school board at the time, the district decided to go with a hundred dollar increase, basically for inflation. So it increased it from seven fifty-seven to eight fifty-seven, and that went for, again, five years. But it didn't start until two thousand and thirteen. Also in two thousand and thirteen, and that was my first year of superintendent, uh, in that spring, they changed a state law on how they basically counted per pupil units. I'll just leave it at that, it's so complicated, I don't wanna get into it. But, uh, it, it actually helped us, it increased by fourteen dollars. So we were getting eight hundred and seventy-one dollars per student, and again, it was for five years. That five years now is up this year. We don't have an extra padded year, and, and people might be wondering, well, why, why didn't you go for it last year, or why you wait until it expires? Basically, 'cause we just had the bond referendum that was, uh, passed in, uh, May of two thousand and fifteen. It was just too close together, um, and, uh, we just feel this is the right thing to do to just have that little bit of a gap, and, uh, I think people will understand what the need is for our district. So, and what Sandy was talking about a little bit earlier in the levy, there's a local optional levy, portion of four twenty-four, that is board-approved, and, uh, almost every district in the state does four twenty-four. And then we have the board-approved for three hundred, and that's where you saw some of the districts in our comparables have seven twenty-four. I think of the three hundred and thirty districts in the state, all but seventy-seven have a minimum of seven twenty-four. So there's seventy, seventy-seven school districts that have just four twenty-four, uh, but pretty much all the rest have a minimum of seven twenty-four. And of course, we have our voter-approved, and this goes back again, uh, to two thousand and eleven, that began in two thousand and thirteen, was at a hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents to get to eight seventy. And this is what expires, and if you wanna know what's at stake, it's six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, um, that's why it's important to renew, and then like, uh, we talked about, we wanna increase by a hundred dollars. And that requested increase will bring it to nine seventy, seventy, and that amount is for four hundred and forty-five thousand. And as we discussed this as a school board, again, to be able to account for inflation and make sure we're safe, uh, and decided to go with it for six years this time rather than five. And, um, obviously, it's very important, and the whole total comes to just about one point one million, uh, amount of dollars for that. But nine seventy is still, uh, you know, put this in, you know, how you perceive this, is still over three hundred dollars less than the state average. And again, this is not to increase any program, it's not to, uh, it's just to maintain what our essential service and programs we have right now. Very important too, to renew and just go a hundred dollars to minimize the tax impact on our local residents. And like I said earlier, a hundred dollars to offset inflation. Some people have asked me, I mean, some think, you know, why just a hundred dollars? Most districts right now are going to the voters in November, a lot of them three to five hundred dollars. I'd rather be on the conservative side, and I think you do too. And if, you know, I mean, obviously, if we get in a situation where we need more, because we don't know what's going to happen in the future with state aid or even federal aid, you know, we can always go back, if there is a need, two, three years down the road and, and do that. The tax impact on the residential home, just like we did with the bond referendum, want to show what is here for this. It's about forty-two dollars a year increase, so a two hundred thousand dollar home. So, it's about three dollars and fifty cents a month. And like I said, we want to have a minimal tax impact. We've just been through a bond referendum where property taxes are raised, so obviously, we're very sensitive about that and keep it as minimal as possible. One thing to keep in mind for agricultural, the impact for an operating levy is different than a bond referendum for construction. For, for this, it's just simply the homestead on that one acre. So, it doesn't, it's just like a residential. The good news though, I will say, although we don't need to worry about a bond referendum for many years, I know I won't be around for it, but there is a, a tax break now, forty percent tax impact, or a break for agriculture for farmers now. That is, was passed in the state legislature this past spring, which is a real step in the right direction, because obviously, it wasn't, it wasn't a real fair thing. And I guess that's what the state legislature thought too. So, no greater impact on the agriculture than it would be for a regular resident. The question will look like this, and again, we propose to increase our general education revenue or our operating revenue by two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents per grade, per pupil. And keep in mind, the one forty-six seventy is the renewal plus the hundred, which makes a total of two forty-six. It will raise taxes like it says there, and it will be applicable for six years, beginning with taxes payable in two thousand and eighteen. So, I'll simply vote a yes, or vote a no. We will have information. Sean Brandt is working hard on this right now. We'll have something on our website, I think even beginning tomorrow. We'll have frequently asked questions. We'll have a video. We'll have my presentation on there. And we're to forward questions to also, just like we did last time. Any questions by the board right now?
You said you presented a few times already. Was there any confusion? It looks pretty simple, but.
Well, it's, I think it's simple if I can present. It's pretty simple. No, I'm just kidding. But no, it's, I, I've had a lot of positive comments. Like I said, when I get up and speak, for example, if it's within district, it's something, I'll be honest, like I tell them before, when I talk, I've talked to two different buildings now. I'll be honest, when I was a teacher, or I even go back as when I was a principal, I really didn't understand it. I knew I had to support it because it was an important thing, but I didn't know, obviously, what I know now. So, what I want to do is when I present it to them, is present in a way so they, first of all, understand it. So, if they get questions by community members or, you know, fellow colleagues, they can answer the questions, but they know they can send them to me if they, if they can answer it. But I think trying to keep it as very simple as possible, so they have an understanding of what it is, and more importantly, why there is a need. And yeah, so far, it's, it's gone well, and being very transparent about it. And like I said, it's, it's just to maintain essential services, to keep what we have right now. We've got a lot of great things going. I think we've done a great job, you know, handling the money and only using it on needs. And then, you know, as we go forward, just continue to get better.
I know you're doing a lot of presentations. Is there any other type of campaigning we're doing? Everything seems pretty quiet out in the public right now. Is there anything we have to be concerned about or?
I, I, to me, I'll be, I, I think, you know, what we do on a daily basis, weekly basis, I mean, and just in the past three, four years or whenever, you know, I think people saw there was a need for facilities. I mean, that came through when you hired a consultant to do the superintendent search. Why we, the whole thing that began that process was the input we got from parents, community members, staff, school board on what the priority was, and that was for facilities. I think when we talk about our daily work or yearly work, I think people trust that we're not gonna ask for something that's a want, that, but when it's a need, that they'll support it. And I think, I think it's a need, and to continue to do great things here, we need to maintain these essential services.
I, I guess what I was kind of saying is that we don't want to let our guard down and just assume it's gonna pass.
Oh, I will, I will, I, I will say, yeah, I will say this. I mean, besides all the presentation stuff like this, it's just like preparing for a game. I mean, you, we gotta make sure we do a good job of communicating and work very hard to explain this. And, you know, it's up to, I mean, it's still gonna be up to the voters, but the next couple of months, we'll work very hard to, to get that community, just so everyone is informed. When I give this presentation, I'm not here to convince anyone what to vote, again, to explain why we're doing it, what the need is, and people got to make a decision. You know, obviously, if there's a, a vote yes committee outside of our district, I mean, that's a whole nother thing. But we'll work hard to make sure people have a good understanding of why the need is.
Other questions? Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Meeting adjourned.